Marine City Commission Meeting, regular meeting minute, regular meeting Thursday, February 20th, 2027 PM. Can we please take a moment of silence for our dearly departed? And let's please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Here.
Commissioner Bryson.
Here.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Here.
Commissioner Callahan.
Here.
Commissioner Clausen.
Here.
Commissioner Merchant.
Here.
Commissioner Verkanen.
Here.
City Manager Levin.
Here.
Moving on to approval of the agenda. I get a motion to approve the agenda. So moved.
Support.
Any questions on the agenda? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Carried.
I just got the chills.
Hmm?
I just got the chills.
I do that quite often. Moving on to public comment. Anyone in attendance is welcome to address the City Commission. Please state your name and please limit your comments to five minutes. This is for you to raise issues. The Commission will not respond, but issues will be followed upon as necessary.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Sebula. I'm the Superintendent for East China School District. Is it okay to pass out or at least?
Thank you.
I'm going to set my timer so I stay within my five minutes here because I could talk and talk and talk. What is being passed around right now is a brochure on the bond proposal that East China School District has on the March 10th ballot of this year. And the very first paragraph on the front page of the bond brochure gives a real nice summary of what the bond proposal is looking for. So I'm just going to read that. On March 10th, 2020, voters in the East China Schools will be asked to consider a bond proposal to improve district facilities. The improvements would address our declining enrollment, safety, security, energy efficiency, and technology issues within our facilities, and would update our learning environments to meet the 21st century educational goals. And you'll see right underneath that are all the focus areas of this bond proposal that the district has on March. The bond proposal for this March came to be after the May proposal did not pass. So what we did is if you turn in your brochure to the page that says we listened, the district went out, we gathered feedback, and tried to understand exactly what our community was looking for. This bond proposal actually started way back in 2016 after the failed attempt at that time of the school district. And we started to look at what exactly our communities wanted in their school district. So after the May 7th bond election, we went back out, we met with communities, committees, we did a survey, and we listened. And so in this next bond proposal, the two high schools, the St. Clair High School and Marine City High School, are going to remain in their current locations. That was overarching a theme that we received after that May 7th proposal, that yes, our community agreed, we need to upgrade our infrastructure, we need to upgrade our technology, we need to right-size our school district for our new population. East China School District in 2001 had just shy of 6,000 students. As of last week's count, that's our February count, we had 3,971 students. So you can see that we no longer need to operate the number of buildings we used to operate for 6,000 students, and many of our school buildings have aging infrastructure. Our youngest school building in our district is 20 years old, that's St. Clair Middle School. The average age of our school buildings is 54 years old. So the infrastructure needs were there. So then if you open up your brochure to the 2020 bond highlights, you will see all of the bulleted items that are included in the bond proposal for every single one of our school buildings, including our maintenance building and our bus building. Every single building in our school district will receive upgrades in this bond proposal. If you would like more detailed explanation on each of these projects and the monies allocated for them, if you go to the East China School District website, there's a Bond 2020 button that looks just like this one on the front here. If you click on that, it will take you to a tax calculator so you can calculate exactly the impact the tax would be on your household. There's an FAQ document that has frequently asked questions, and then right after that FAQ document is an 83-page document that outlines every one of these projects. So you can see in detail what the plans are, what the scope of the project is, and what the dollars allocated for each project. Also on our website is a PowerPoint presentation that I've been giving. I've, let's see, I'm at 43 different presentations that I've given on this bond proposal in our communities, and I've used that same presentation at each one of those community or at each one of those presentations, and that's on our website also. So any information that you need or have any questions that you may have, everything is there, or you can always contact my office. That information is on the backside of the brochure. I also want to point out, along with our declining enrollment, our aging infrastructure, is the fact that our technology in our district is in need of a serious upgrade. We're operating on a Windows 7 platform, and we're not able to upgrade that due to our computers. Our computers were not able to receive an upgrade, they would shut them down. So we'd need to replace all the computers in the district in order to operate. It's causing already a lot of issues within our school district as far as communication pieces, and we're hoping that this bond will allow us to upgrade our technology so that we can address those. The financial information, the last part that I will touch on, you can see that on this side, it shows all of the, oh, and my time's up already, all of the school districts in our surrounding area, where we are currently, where we'd be if this bond proposal passed. We're currently at 2.08 milage rate. If this passed, we'd be at a 3.58. Last summer, we were at 3.24, so it's effectively a .34 increase from summer of 2019 to summer of 2020 taxes. So with that, I have two more presentations, community ones. One is February 26th at the central office on Meisner Road. That one is at 6:00 PM. And then I have one more on March 5th at 6:30 at the Lutheran Church on Vine Street in St. Clair. So if anybody would like further information, I have two more community presentations. May I answer any questions? Thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? Hearing none, we're going to move on to approval of the minutes for the City Commission meeting, regular meeting, February 6th, and the closed session meeting minutes, February
Make a motion to approve the regular minutes of February 6th, 2020.
Any questions or concerns on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Closed? Carried. Did you do both, Bill, or just the one?
No, he did one.
I didn't do it.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve the closed session meeting minutes?
Make a motion to close session minutes of February 6th, 2020.
Support.
Since we really can't have questions on that, all in favor?
Aye.
Cosed? Carried. Moving on to the consent agenda. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I make a motion, will you approve the consent agenda, letters A through G?
Support.
Motion support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkanen.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on to financial business dispersments, including payroll, $283,579.95. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Questions and concerns on dispersments, including payroll? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkanen.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabosh.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to the unfinished business, which A is going to be 260 South Parker Final Plan Approval.
Good evening, everyone. It's nice to be here again. David Gassman, Partners in Architecture. We'll do a couple things tonight, update, of course, and Brian Hines, project manager, and Alzer Mahdi here as well, that will be doing a little part of this. We're going to show you some plans, but just wanted to do a little background on, you know, how we got to this point. Some of it's going to be a repeat, but bear with me for a minute, I'll make it brief. We started with the user group meetings, with administration and staff to determine the needs, went through a programming process, couple workshops, also did field investigations, walking through the building, examining existing conditions as well as the site. Did that again with the engineers just to get a little more detail. And through the process of gathering the information, we worked on concept plans on how we could repurpose the building, and went through 10 different iterations of the possibilities, really turning one side upside down, and really looking at it from very different angles. And you viewed that plan, I think, in October, maybe again in January, and we have heard some comments back from your visit recently and a couple weeks ago, and then some further conversations with administration. We have another iteration of that plan, taking into consideration some cost-saving possibilities, and maybe just some functional improvements that we got from the comments. So we're going to go through that, and you're getting copies of it as well. If you don't mind, you could use that certainly to look at, but we're probably going to try to focus your attention up here, not too washed out. Just for all the same key. Or maybe for the benefit of your audience.
Yeah. Sorry. Yeah. Put the waterway down.
There you go.
So we're going to go through some demolition plans, and we're probably not going to cover them too well, but it's really just for your information, to see the scope of which we're removing items that are there. And to make it easier, the plans that you looked at for the redevelopment, we've darkened the walls that are new, so you can see where you've eliminated something and then as a consequence, added something back. We have the plans split in two areas, so east and a west, or right and a left. This gives you a portion of the building, that's the western edge demolition, so here that mean, the fitness center, what used to be the activity space in the fitness center, those that called the doctor's suite area, just to give you a little orientation. So you can see when you're looking at that, the dash line represents an object that we're removing. For the most part, we see two things technically together like that with the wall. Other elements in this are things like light fixtures and so forth, and it's just a way to be efficient with the way we put the document together, so it's showing floor plan items as well as ceiling items. It's easier for us to put it together, it's easier for the contractor to understand the scope of the work, but it might be a little confusion if you're not looking at them on a regular basis. So that gives you an idea that there's a fair amount of things in the space being removed, trying to keep as much as possible, walls, that is. Just as a little further explanation, most of the ceiling, therefore lights, are going to be removed because the scope of the work that's happening on the ground going up to the ceiling really causes that to happen. And the primary thing is electrical. So basically, we're going to rewire, redistribute power throughout the whole building, so the best way to do that is through the ceiling, therefore most of it's coming out.
Same thing with the supply, the heat, the storage, the ductwork, all the way now. This is basically one large space up front here where the fitness center used to be. In the new plan, there's a lot of smaller offices, so it would be taking the walls all the way up to the underside of the trusses, and then the jip board's just going to go above the ceiling, and we're going to be using the ceiling space as a plenum return. So instead of providing a separate ductwork for each one of those individual spaces, we're going to be utilizing a plenum space. This is going to require us to board the underside of those trusses, and right now, that is a really good idea because currently, there's a, it's just a, you have your layer of cracked paper, your insulation, and then you're open to the attic, so they're currently within this front area space. To improve the, both the heating and cooling, and the vapor transmission between the attic space and the office space, we'll be boarding that up and combining the sealed plenum space. So there we go.
It'll significantly improve the energy consumption that happens. One, it's lowering the volume that it's heating, and it's also providing a barrier for escaped energy.
And there was one question that we had, which building code we will be using, utilizing, and it is the, we'll be using the renovated portion of the building code, so both the Michigan Building Code and I think we're going to be alteration level three for the renovation code. And the level three is it's over 50%, we're affecting over 50% of the area, and with the renovation code, it allows us to not quite bring everything existing there up to code, because obviously, there's a lot of insulation in the walls and the ceiling spaces that we wouldn't necessarily want to rip all that out just because it's existing, and it'd be a very costly endeavor to do that, so in order to come up to today's energy code.
One of the big things in the energy code is the requirement of continuous insulation, which in older facilities is almost impossible to do without doing a major roof reconstruction. And what Ryan mentioned a minute ago about putting the board to the underside of the roof trusses is going to help that, but it won't quite meet the code as it kind of is today. But to do that, you'd have to rebuild the building today. And a couple other codes, you mentioned Michigan Building Code, Michigan Rehab Code. In addition to that, it's Michigan Mechanical Code and Plumbing Code, and then also the Life Safety Code and Electrical National Code. So all of those are going to work. The big difference was using the rehab and the building code.
The rehab code is that's just the existing building.
Right.
And the Michigan Building Code is going to start talking about your fire protection and stuff.
Everything else, yes.
Yes.
Anything we can use that would comply, the main thing is the energy code. Anything that can comply to the rehab code, we're going to apply that, and it'll be beneficial to the city if we do it that way. Any life safety, obviously, we're going to make it life safety, we're not going to cut any corners there.
So with the demo plan, we do have an option A and a B, and that goes as well as the, what we're going to see with the new plan. But the areas that I did want to point out on Area A, that we are keeping, or actually, we will be moving some of the existing conditions in Opt. A, is the, we've got the water meter currently in this small space here. So that water meter is not ideal to the floor plan. So we developed the floor plan over many different schemes, looking at putting the offices both in the backside of the building where the old tenant spaces were.
Basically, off to this side.
That's right, off to the left where the contractor office used to be. We put them in the middle to try to see if we can get maybe storage on one side, so we tried all different schemes, and this was the best area for it because, one, there's natural daylight for a lot of windows all the way around this whole entire side of the building. There's good visibility from the street so that when there's passerbyers wanting to come in, they want to see business, they want to see it's open and welcoming. So we've got that station so that when there is people in the building, you can see it from the street, whereas if you were to have a meeting space up here, the meeting space isn't always used. Also, this is the widest portion of the building if we go back to the other plan. This is a much narrower space, so it wasn't very conducive to having a wide, open area for both the entry, the lobby, and the workstation for where you'd actually interface with all of the city office.
If you go to the new plan, Brian, maybe you can point out one more thing about the decision.
With the new plan, yeah.
Yeah. So point of entry, what Brian was trying to say, the width is more like that, not just this. So if you come in here, the point of orientation for the public is all this area, so they can stand here and see across, likewise, from within the space, you're seeing towards what we call the central. But with a narrow portion in the back, you weren't able to get as clear of an orientation for all aspects. And one of the things we really tried to.
You might have maybe just a few people working, so you have to have visibility from all the offices, so that's what we're trying to achieve with this layout. So from every office, you have a sightline of that front desk there, except for the city manager's office, if there wasn't the need there for that. And this office here, it could be an office or a conference room, we have the conference room here. Those two spaces are pretty much interchangeable as far as the, how large the two spaces are and the functionality of them. But this current layout seems more likely the better location because the city manager would be able to see people coming in versus down in the corner. Other items that was nice about this plan, we had this little workroom here. By moving the water meter over to this room right here, we're able to capture a vantage point from that workroom into the lobby space and vice versa. So if you do come into the lobby and say somebody is working back in the workroom, you'd be able to, you'd be able to see that there's motion behind there, that somebody's working behind there, and vice versa, you'd be able to see through there. Whereas on this, we'll get into Option B, that room, we kept the room because it was a cost savings to possibly do that. So a little bit about the space, you enter here, this is the main entrance of Esteville. Off the entrance of Esteville, we have a single occupant boiler room. We were able to achieve one single occupant boiler room at the lobby entrance because we have less than 15 occupants within this space here. If there was more than 15, we would have to have two single occupant boiler rooms, or at least two spaces, both the men's and the women's, but since there's only 15 serving the space, we're able to use that as a single. We have two other toilet rooms that are served by the population of all the workers, the city offices. And right out from there, we're trying to keep all of the plumbing like kind of centralized, so nice and keeping it where the existing conditions. This plan has an MDF room right next to those toilet rooms, so this was an added area in order to kind of gain some space, make these toilet rooms right-sized, because any additional space for our boiler room, for additional tile, additional finishes. So this would be keeping it as small as possible, and basically gaining spaces for the, for storage and MDF. So within this space, we've got.
You see the MDF? The acronym, MDF.
MDF is the main distribution, so it's basically where your server is. So all of your technology server goes from there.
Ideally, you want to have that in the center of the building just so it cuts down and runs out to the outer areas where it serves. So that's kind of an ideal spot for it.
Yeah, right in the middle of the building, I guess.
Is that where that water meter is, in the center?
The water meter is right here, the new location for the water meter.
Well, if you moved it over to the other side of the staircase, you could put a door in there, and you could put everything right there, because the, if you look at the drawing, the water tank and the mop sink is right in line with that area that you have that printing room or whatever you have there.
This storage room here?
You're referring to the.
On the other side of the, the other side of the.
Oh, on the other side over here.
Yeah, and if you, and where that room comes down and elves out, if you put a door across there, you can put all that and make that a mechanical room without moving the.
You mean across here, door to wall?
Yeah. And it's already there, the deep sink or the mop sink is already there, and the hot water tank is already in that area.
Once you flip to Plan B.
We do have an option B, so this is Option A, keeping it. So in Option A, we're utilizing additional space for this workroom, so we've got additional countertop space and workroom area for all the paper folding. We've got the printer in here, so there's quite a bit of, this is going to be a really busy area within the rooms, so we're trying to utilize as much space as possible to keep that, this space large. But we do have a more cost-saving option, this is our option B.
And as he's flipping to that, the reason we show that in Plan A is more optimizing the function based on what we learned during the programming, and what would happen in there, and the things that would be needed in there. There are options to it, but the Plan A is what we felt was most workable for the function and efficiency of the space. Granted, there is cost savings, and this is what Plan B is going to show you.
And that's what I'm looking at, cost savings.
There's a number of things.
Because that mop sink is way over on the other side, is a lot of digging.
Just as you suggested, really, it's the, you can see the.
Put a door on.
The wall there, the door there, it kind of keeps it in the same space, but the compromise is this space gets smaller.
What was that space in Plan A?
That is the workroom area, workroom.
Yeah, as it stands, this workroom, we just barely fit all the functions of that workroom, so there's no additional space for any kind of.
Layout area or.
If another function happens, it wouldn't be able to happen within that workroom.
What do you mean, another function?
The other one gives you a little bit of extra layout space for, because.
Pack of preparation.
There's mailers that they'll have to do, they have this little extending accordion mailer system, now that, this gives additional space for all that to happen.
Can I ask?
On the other.
Why do we need such a large lobby?
And it seems large because in comparison to this, the overall plan, it's kind of like the largest space. It really isn't huge, we have dimensions on the.
It's 285 square feet.
266 square feet, yeah.
Yeah, we can zoom in on there, so we can see, we're only 15 feet wide.
Yeah. But that's where the bathroom is.
By 14 feet.
Farther down, you're bigger. Where was the original door? Or is the door still in the same place?
So the original door moved, and. Where's that W1 right there? Yeah, this window right there.
Okay. So you didn't want to keep the door there because that's, you know, we had to move the door.
Yeah, because allowing, by moving this door to this location, it puts this, this best of be locked to the corner and not smack dab center within the lobby space. And we did try other options where we're trying to keep that door in the same location, and it really is, this is the best location for where that lobby space is, because it allows this to open up nice and large here so that when people are passing by, they're not having to bump into each other. You know, you can have actually a space where maybe a table set out where they can write up checks or payouts, so there's just additional space there that, it's not really additional, this is like the right size for a lobby space for.
And we have brochure racks and things like that that the public needs to come in and get, yes.
Is that a requirement, the lobby space?
The space is, the size of it could vary, obviously. You need to have a place to have.
Under the, what, the energy code?
No, it's not, it's not a code requirement, it's just a function of what happens in a city hall. You need to have a place where the point of contact between the public and the service counter.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just kind of comparing it what we have over at the PD, which that gets a lot of traffic too, and.
It could, I think the question is, is it too big? Well, I know it's too big, but could it be smaller? Yeah, the answer is yes, you could make it smaller. I think the reasons it is what it is, is as Brian was pointing out, where would you put the vestibule? And putting it off to the counter, creating some separate space, someone could see, someone could be at the counter conducting business, and then also the passerby, they need to get to the. And then also the passerby that need to get to the, the work area. But it could be smaller. And in Plan B, it does show a slightly smaller scheme.
That's right. And we, we did have to make it, uh, slightly smaller to keep the water meter in the same location. So, um, water meter stays in the same location. We, we keep the, basically keep, uh, a, a little bit portions of the, the walls that, that made up the original construction of that water meter room. Um, and then we're, we're welding out a little bit more just so that it works with the geometry. And, um, just so that squeezed this, this entrance down a little bit here and it made this countertop a little bit smaller. And we took out an additional foot of the city, um, manager's office that, that wall shifted.
And that, and that did two things. It kept the water meter and it also kept the function of the custodial, uh, floor sink in it too.
So I have a question about the workspace. That, Plan B is, is now less workspace. Is that workable for you guys?
My question-
You're the one that's working there, so I, you know, I mean, part be us to tell you what you need.
My question was, your thought process with the lobby being too big, what would you make bigger by making that smaller? That's what I'm-
Hopefully the workroom.
The workroom, that's where we would focus the additional room. In the workroom, you guys have allocated for the mailer and, uh, printing machine. And what would you say, square footage wise, on this current plan, which is size? With the lobby, that size?
Hundred and thirty square feet. And then that's smaller by putting in the work surfaces around the perimeter. So it's, I don't know, fifteen percent smaller than that once you put in the furnishings and cabinetry.
I would say that, I think that's actually probably bigger than what we have currently. And I would say-
Well, the, our biggest thing too is, I mean, we want them to be able to work, but we also have to watch our costs. I mean, we're not a rich community. We got a lot of people watching this. Our renovation cost for this is really, really high.
One with the dimensions on it? Just a- And it's hard to really tell how big something is. So from that wall to this leading edge is about six and a half feet. Taking the counter out, maybe close to seven feet. So that's two people working back to back fairly comfortably. Doesn't give you much room to-
It doesn't give you much room to work in that long, narrow spot. That's why I said, uh, that'd be a good place for the-
No, it really comes down to, as you're saying, you think it's workable. What I see in buildings after they're done is there's two complaints. And it really happens in two areas, real simple areas. It's the workroom and storage. Those are the two things that shrink in this phase of the process. And then everybody regrets it. And I'm not saying you're going to, but I've been through this a couple of times where they wish they wouldn't have shrunk things or eliminated storage.
That's why I was asking about the workspace.
At the same time, is the balance. Budget is, at the end of the day, you have to, have to-
Absolutely. We all want to save money.
Well, you got a rumor too, like your busiest time you're going through for, like, per month is, is going to be when you're doing water bills, for instance. You're processing thousands of water bills for your residents. So the girls are up there not for an actual minutes, they're up there for several hours processing all those. Whereas, you're saying like you're larger communities, you're not a rich community, but they're going to outsource it to a, a printing company. So it's, you either spend the time and the money making it a workable area or if it's not, then you have to think of other alternatives. But my just opinion, it's, it's okay.
One of the things, and I, I don't want to be contradictory, uh, at all. But when, in this process, people usually lean back on the fact that, well, it's better than we have now. But what we plan for is not just to give you what you already have. We look at what, what's optimal and what happens in the next twenty years. We don't know everything, but we plan with that in mind. And that's kind of the advice that we give. And, and the decision's kind of yours. And we do have to balance money in all of decisions that are made. Couple of things you want to go over in planning here. This is the scheme A. This shows this wall with a wider corridor. When we get to scheme B, Brian will point out the difference there. This shows this split, we did do a little optimization in terms of square footage within there. But there's a lot of existing plumbing in there now. Plan B looks at how do we use the plumbing more efficiently than versus th- this arrangement, moving the wall to make a five-foot corridor and the splitting of these two. That was a good cost savings. And I don't know exactly where some of these ideas came from, but when we're looking at them and trying to make them work, we're seeing dollar signs, uh, being saved. So we do appreciate that input.
Well, can I ask one question? I, I, I was trying to look at the picture of the water meter room that I had. In this space you have, is the water meter where you've got water meter or is it over towards the one corner?
Want to go back to the other thing?
It's generally right in this area.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's like in that corner.
Explain where it is.
It's in the middle, it's in the middle, it's almost a third in from the wall of the, of the width of the building.
So is it exactly where the WM in is?
How exact is that, Brian?
Well, the, the specific room is like right here. I don't, I don't know if it's like-
Go back to the demo plan. So these are existing walls, these white ones. And they go a little bit further in each direction.
Yeah, but this is right-
Right left.
It's right outside the office right now.
So that's where it is now.
Where's the demo plan looking?
So these two sections of wall right here-
Yeah.
Right here are the white sections on the next plan. So you could see orientation. Want to flip it back, Brian?
Okay.
So if we're looking at this purely from a, how do we save the most money possible? This is, this is the scheme.
Well, what I was looking at is if the water meter could be moved within that space and so that you could extend her wall out for her workroom. So I was trying to see where it was in my picture. Could it be pushed towards the north side?
Is it close to this wall? So you're saying maybe possibly moving this one over a little bit and this?
I'm, I'm saying move it right north. Well, I don't know, I'm looking at it north-south.
Yeah. Yeah, up, yeah.
Up is north.
Yeah.
All I'm saying is it can be moved to that far portion and you can coordinate off and then you could add that whole section of space to her ru- workroom.
I would, I would say if, if the point of keeping it in that proximity is to save money, moving it a little bit is going to cost more than it's worth than moving it twenty feet.
It's just the question.
Yeah. I'm just trying to give you some rationale.
Yep.
Yeah, just as a note, I'm thinking that, uh, water meter. So that, to keep it where it is is about sixty-five hundred dollar savings. So that's a pretty good chunk of change.
Yeah.
Yep, chunk of change.
If, if you only save three thousand to move it a foot, I, I wouldn't do it.
Okay.
Want to go back to the big view there?
It's ridiculous.
Hmm.
It's ridiculous.
So as you can see with this, uh, this plan, um, this, where I have my cross area, that's the existing plumbing wall. So this plan tried to optimize the cost savings by keeping the, the plumbing wall in the same location. So this toilet location is in the exact same location as the, the previous toilet. So that hole should be in the ground at the same location. So some good cost savings there, you don't have to tear up the ground and do that. Um, this one is where the, where the urine will used to be. So there's going to be some underground work in order to, uh, put that new toilet, uh, there. These sinks are a little bit different than the existing toilet rooms or existing lavatories. They shifted ju- ever so slightly mainly so that we can, we're basically optimizing the, um, the width of our ADA clearances and, uh, we're adding, uh, some drinking pump in right off of that same plumbing wall. Keeping things nice and efficient and close together.
Now, we're required to have drinking pumps?
Yes.
Yes. This scheme, Brian pointed out, the rooms are a little more generous in size, but it's so we optimized the plumbing. And he, he showed you in the other plan where they were more right sized. So the idea is there are the floor tile finishes and so forth that are more expensive in a bathroom get smaller. Even with that in, in mind, this is still about a five thousand dollar saving, even though the finishes are a little bit offsetting to that.
I mean, are you really going to damage that much of the tile that's in there? I mean, the tile wasn't good shape, so that's another question.
We would look to try to salvage and then use some of the salvage material where we were going to damage because it's going to get damaged. Um, more than likely, we'd look for a compatible tile that would infill where damage is done versus trying to keep exactly everything that's there.
Yeah, well, I, I'm only questioning because of the, if you're going to do demo, we want to talk about whether you're going to demo it or not demo it because of the cost. So, that's the only reason why I'm asking. But in the cost sheet, it said that we were going to take the tile out and redo it.
We're going to look to optimize using what's there.
Okay.
And salvage the stuff that has to come out so the salvage material get reused where we do have damage. Because it will happen.
So if you're going to put this, the, the tor- toilets in that same location, are we going to use existing ADA toilets that are in there now?
If we can.
The eighteen inches from the wall is the same, so.
Yeah, if we can, we certainly will.
So these are going to be men's and women's, not unisex?
Correct.
Why?
Well, the code says you have to have one for each if you're over, or in a private area. So this is called the occupancy B. So we're having man, or male and female versus two unisex. I guess you could leave it that way. Um, and I've seen some occupancies choose to do that because of the question that comes up, whether is it unisex more than male or female? I've, I've heard that come up too.
Well, that's kind of what I'm looking at, I mean-
Well, if you've got an occupancy load less than fifty, right? And, uh, and you call it an office space or an office or business, they're only, they only have to have one bathroom, right?
No, we have to have two.
That's if you call it, it along with the assembly, but if you call it-
For the assembly, we need two also.
Yeah, for the assembly, but if you call it business space, if you looked in the building book in the chart, it goes down and it says you only need one.
I think we did look in the four point zero three one. I'll hand this off.
And I'll, I'll, I'll check it again later.
The fixture count is less than fifty, but you have to have separated facilities. I think maybe we're crossing two items.
No, I didn't, I thought you were going to have a mixed use.
Well, e- oh, I, but we still need two.
I'll, I'll talk to you later about that.
Okay.
The label on the door can be changed afterward.
Yeah, and the, the gender thing might change as well, like you write the code.
Bingo, yes.
So with, uh, gender neutral being, uh, a hot topic, uh, and that might be, we might have a totally different, uh, approach for, for that gender assigning of toilet rooms.
Well, that's why I'm asking.
If state gets their way, it'll be all bathrooms, no name, men and women. It'll be just bathrooms, the state has their way.
Have you made them both unisex? Would there be any difference to the actual construction of it?
No, same, just the sign on the door.
Yeah, that's, I mean, we don't need, we need a-
It's a door sign. We're signing my label, honestly.
That's it. So I think we've covered the five main things that are on this plan, which we're calling B or ten B.
So on this plan though, you moved the MDF room over by the stairs.
That's correct. So you would put like the server back here in this small space.
Is it going to be cool enough in there? Because, you know, you have to keep those from, you have to keep those from getting overheated.
Yeah, that'll, that'll have a special ventilation to it. Whether it's added CFM from the, the main unit or a separate unit altogether.
Is the door in the break room, is that an existing door or a new door? Going outside?
That's a new door.
Okay.
The one, you mean exiting out, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And the one in the office area where the four cubicles are, that's the existing? Looks like.
The existing location?
Yeah.
The existing location, new door.
That's the one beat up a little bit.
Because that looks like it's across from the old one. Which means that's the one that's on the other side.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just looking to see where you're putting new doors and you're using existing doors.
Ozar, is that full ninety-degree swing represent new totally?
Correct.
So everywhere you see a door, I'll use this as my example.
Yeah.
Ninety-degree turn as compared to that one, a forty-five-degree turn, that's how you would distinguish new from existing.
Yeah.
That doesn't necessarily mean it's, uh, new in a new location, it's just a new door.
Right, yeah, so like this is an existing location, a new door because the condition of the materials-
That's what, that's what I was asking. I want to make sure that it was an existing door.
It's existing, open, new door.
Yes.
So just to recap, the, the main five things is the, keeping the water meter in its, or in its current locations to savings. Water heater, custodial sink on the floor. In the bathroom, salvaging the position of the wall to save the replumbing, concrete saw cutting, so forth. And then the corridor width, this is basically the existing width, existing wall, existing wall, very narrow. You've been through it. It's compliant, but it's not as user-friendly as you'd like to see.
And it's barely compliant, like the entrances to the door, it's like forty-two inches that you need as a, or pulling in that way? And that's what we have there, it's like thirty-four.
And this was purposely left open for five-foot turnaround. If you get to the end of the corridor or you're in a wheelchair, you have some mobility with, I'm sorry. I'm getting lost in your view.
Sorry.
But, uh, so there's some compromise, but it's compliant.
So what's the, what's the cost savings on Plan B?
Plan B is-
Tot- in total?
I'd say roughly thirty-five thousand dollars, in that range. It's not exact yet, but, uh, we wanted to have some sense of what it would be.
Figure we can work off of at least a discussion.
Yes.
Huge chunk.
Yeah, and when we looked at it, we, we tried to do some benchmarking when we look at interior renovation, remodeling. You know, where, where do you find the happy medium for those things? And they vary wildly depending on what you do. The, the real easy things are things that happen everywhere universally. Uh, flooring, ceiling, painting, electrical, HVAC. The things that vary are number of doors, how many walls. Those things make the number vary. So you're looking at a seventy-five to a hundred and forty-dollar swing per square foot for typical interior renovation. And just as an example, we did a little calculating to see where we fit within that benchmark. We did a, this is another example. We did a renovation for the Village of Beverly Hills, basically the same kind of thing. We redid the whole space. And that was at, roughly in today's dollars, a hundred and seventeen dollars a square foot. So somewhat in the middle. And then based on where we, we are right now for this plan, we're about ninety-two dollars. So we're slightly, I'd say, below the median price in square footage. And, which I think is pretty good.
That is good.
Based on the amount of redo that we're doing, it's almost a universal from a infrastructure, electrical standpoint, all, all new flooring, all new ceilings. You know, I think they've been, uh, done a really good job efficiently using existing walls where they could, openings where they are. But, you know, we, we did it from a, how does it function? How's it going to work for you today and into the future?
Get into the meeting in this place?
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, first one, we'll go to option one, which is option A. So option A, um, this is kind of how the, the toilet room and, uh, entry lobby, multi-purpose room, their entrance to the multi-purpose room, uh, flushed out originally. Um, after we did a little bit, uh, more investigation of the, the area and, and kind of-
Keep going.
Rebuilding up the space and making it a little bit more efficient. Uh, we were able to gain a little bit more of the lobby space. Uh, but this was basically, uh, one concept that we had. Uh, we have many of them. But the, the current concept, uh, is in the concept B that you'll find on your plans in front of you guys. Um, so this is, this is a little bit more efficient layout. Um, it is taking up one square, uh, one linear foot of this, uh, um, multi-purpose room because in order to get like all the ADA clearances, uh, to flush out here, uh, we had to move this wall one foot down, uh, which isn't detrimental to getting the total number of occupants that were requested at sixty. So we were still achieving that. Uh, but basically the, the lobby space is much more efficient as far as it being a little bit larger and, uh, I think laid out a little bit better for, um, how these spaces are working. So we've got, uh, a mend and running toilet room. Uh, we're calling out a future shower because, uh, there's a, uh, current possibility of it being used as a, um-
Next shower.
Not necessarily an emergency operations center, but at least a, a place for a shelter for, um, a community comes out without having power to become an empty shower. Because there's also going to be a future, um, a generator out of this building, uh, too so that if there is a power outage, uh, this could be used at this.
Okay.
For the whole building? You're going to get like a gen rack for the whole building?
And, and I have one question that we had that-
That's in the future.
We're not necessarily planning for the, the generator and out, but we know as it's in the future planning. Um, but, uh, it would almost make sense that, uh, the whole building was, um, powered because, uh-
And there are some grant funded projects with, as warming centers and that, through Homeland Security, so there are some chances for that.
Okay, can I ask, I want to talk a little bit on the shower thing. I know we were talking about that, but then we were also talking about that if we had a major issue, nine times out of ten, they can bring in portable showers, which would be probably a better use than us trying to keep these forever and maybe never using them, hopefully that we never have to use them. But technically, you could bring in a portable shower system, they usually bring them in on trucks. So my question is, if you didn't have to put those in there, what does that do?
That would probably allow you to move this wall back, creating more space in the meeting room.
Yes.
A couple feet possibly. I'd say at least two feet.
Okay, because that's, that's my thing, I don't know about anybody else, but you can, you can bring them in in a truck if we ever had anything that major happen, you're gonna want something bigger anyway, besides those two little showers.
That would only be though, the only time we would be able to use a truck system like that is under an emergency management program through the feds.
Yeah.
Because even through the state, they don't have them.
Yeah, well.
Yeah, the availability, and then, and then to get water to them, that's a lot of water.
Well, we gotta hook up.
They, they can do it right through a hydrant.
Oh, they can do it through a hydrant?
Yeah.
Yeah, all I'm saying is, it's, you know.
Chance of getting them in is.
We're, we're gonna put this in, and it's gonna cost us a couple feet and some money, and.
Yeah, you'll never use them, maybe never use them, and you gotta keep the traps full of water, so you don't get. Prime them all the time, maintenance on them. But the other thing I had along that, with that, is we're getting in probably ahead of myself. But the, the meeting room is twenty-eight by thirty-six, and your storage room is thirty-three by twenty-nine, we got a bigger area for storage than we do for a meeting room.
Can you go to that, Brian? I don't recall that. Oh, that storage room, I think you meant storage room off of the.
No, the big one.
Yeah.
As I said, it's thirty-three, yeah.
I thought you meant chair storage.
Yeah, the chair, stairs storage, there's a little one, but I think that.
Well, if we got rid of the showers, could we do a double stall, double stall? I mean, it is, it is a meeting room, there's gonna be a lot of people.
Couldn't do a double stall, but you could possibly do in one of them, a urinal in addition to the water closet. And that would, that would catapult you into another size category.
Well, part of two on the storage, I went in and I looked at our current basement situation, and I took a bunch of pictures, and I know the staff is currently going through a lot of the stuff that we have, which, there's already a pile that's going. But I looked into these, and they're not that expensive, but these large seven shelf unit file cabinets that are rotating, they're around eleven hundred bucks a piece, it would store a ton of what we have in there, instead of these little cubicle things that have a box in them, we don't utilize the storage in our basement very well. There is a lot of stuff in there, but I don't know how much of that's gonna go, probably a lot of it.
Maybe about twenty-five percent.
So if we utilize these larger cabinets with the storage, and you can get multitude of different kinds, and they're not that expensive, you could cut down on the volume of storage space that you need there, because you got that over a thousand square feet. What is it, a thousand forty-nine, I think it was? That storage space?
Yeah.
Is the thinking there to make the meeting room bigger, just to have it bigger?
Yeah.
If you were gonna, if that was the capture you're looking for, if this were the meeting room, you could keep the same concept, pull this wall down, make that pre-function space bigger, make this the storage and make it smaller. I, I think there's a real possibility of creating more space for a meeting room and increasing the pre-function restroom for the, that multi-purpose space.
That does get into a conflict with us wanting to lease out the space then, because during the day, when we have to access the storage, we'd be walking through the meeting room to get to the storage.
Yeah.
And that's precisely one of the versions I remember that we looked at early in the process.
And then the storage area, we've talked about that if we do need to add another office or a couple cubicles in the office space, the, the conference, our conference room would move into the storage space.
And like he said, you can never have too much storage.
We can't lose sight of the fact that that's our election space too, so we have to keep that forefront in our mind wherever we place everything. We gotta keep as much room possible in there to get voters in and out of there.
Now.
In and out.
And the flow for the doors as well.
The meeting room.
Is that space big enough for the two precincts?
It's only a thousand square, a little, thousand forty-seven square feet, it's not very big.
I'm concerned about that, I am, I'm concerned, I'm told that, I haven't, I haven't seen walls taken out, it's hard to visualize, I didn't, I'm told, I haven't even been, you know, back there to see the whole layout, but I'm told it's equivalent to this, and this is tight.
That's what I'm saying, so.
I can't, it can't be smaller.
But the issue with using this space is that you have rotational flow, so you have people that are.
Yes.
Going out and around and then back in the same place that they come out.
So we're hoping to have people come in there, we can hold them in the vestibule like we do in this hallway, so it doesn't get overly crowded, have a precinct on both sides with a walkway down the middle, and then come out, they're gonna have to come out the other door and walk around. Yes, yes.
Yeah, but it depends on where they park, you're not gonna make somebody come out that side door if they're parked over on the other side.
We, we won't have room to.
Well, but if you got a handicap person, how you gonna do that, and they gotta go all the way around the building?
We talked about a handicap person, we would let them go out the end, to be able to get to that handicap party.
I still think you could cut down a little bit on the storage, move that, I'd move that wall a little bit, but.
We can't move that wall.
That wall, that's fixed, that's very.
Is that the one, oh, because that's the addition?
Yes.
It's really one space or the other, I think, and everything's pointing to that space on the west being meeting space.
With the functional flow for expansion and just the use of that as a multi-purpose space, it makes total sense to us. Like I said, we did ten other versions and we charretted them pretty carefully.
Yeah, but I mean, we didn't see them, so I don't know what you did.
Yeah, well, now we're having a conversation about it, which is good.
I think getting rid of those showers and getting a couple extra feet in the boardroom probably does make sense.
Could you remove the whole rear vestibule in the back and put the storage in the storage room?
That, the here?
Just move that, have a doorway there, right where it's, and, and actually turn that into a, your storage for that room.
You want to move the storage into the file room?
The table and chair storage into the file room.
Yeah.
That would give you more square footage.
But you can't move the stuff in the other corner.
We wouldn't, we don't want to mess with that, it's the infrastructure that would stay.
You can't move that, that's the problem.
Another option, I guess, I think we did look at this, if this function happened here, came out of this lobby into here, this could be a bigger space, even maybe even a divided space.
What would be the cost to bring the plumbing over into that space for a restroom?
Be expensive.
Yes.
Yeah, that's how we wound up where we are, is trying to optimize some of the stuff that's already there.
I'd get rid of the showers and try to get a couple feet that way, and.
I think that's about the only option that we have.
Now, I think when we walked through that building with you, you, you guys, that bathroom in that one corner, though, all the wall was all busted out and stuff, because that has a problem with freezing on that corner.
Hmm.
And he mentioned about bringing in a false wall to, and insulated in that, and then, that would cut off room though. But you think in that north wall there, you're gonna have any problems with, with freezing right there with the bathrooms right against the wall?
Well, we haven't measured what that, the heat's going into there, obviously we'd make that one correct.
Yeah, there's, there's the two toilets in there.
But not on the north wall.
This is the north wall.
Huh?
This is the north wall.
Can you go back to the existing?
I think the existing has it currently.
The existing is on the north wall.
Yeah, they will be there both.
Yeah, but it's not on the north.
So.
This is, we moved the plumbing, so it's no longer right on the wall.
That problem would go away.
Okay, I'm looking at the drawings I had, so.
And you're getting rid of that water heater in there?
Yeah, the current.
That's going on the other end, okay, I see it. So let me ask you this, what if, on this one, what if you took the women's room and put it next to where the men's room is instead?
Can you go back to that plan?
And getting rid of the seating area?
Well, move the women's room up next door to it.
Yes.
Walk this way?
Yes. How much could we gain that way?
It's gonna be more buttoned, the plumbing line is going directly where the bathrooms are right now, right where you have one of our, the drain line, is directly where it ended with the, so you're gonna have to suck.
Can you go back to the, the building plan?
I think we had a, we did have an option where we, was it option one?
Taking out the showers give a little more flexibility.
Oh, yeah.
So if you took those out, would that work better, because then you could move, I don't know how much.
I don't think that geometry then gives you more space into the meeting room, just thinking about the chunk. These are fifty square feet roughly, at minimum, one here, one here, then you have this kind of funky little shape for your lobby, and this, to make it work right, this wall needs to creep down, I think.
Do we, well, I guess, I guess, I know you're trying to keep that wall there, but I'm just wondering, is that a sink and a counter in there? On that version, that right there? I'm just trying to see if, you know, do you need all that?
Well, that would be for your multi-purpose space, and to make it, I guess, rentable, you need, you need that.
So you don't see the bathrooms? I mean, I'm trying to figure the purpose really of the wall.
Why is you calling it?
You mean this?
This is the divider?
Yeah.
Well, so in a meeting like this, if you have a pre-function activity out there.
We got them right there. Right outside the door.
Yeah, it's not, it's not normal.
If we're spending this kind of money, we don't want our, I mean, put us, put away.
Well, I'm trying to gain us more space, is what I'm trying to do, find a way to gain more space. And the bathroom.
It also acts as a little bit of a, a windlock, or.
Right.
Acts as a vestibule. It's certainly good practice, and I wouldn't recommend it, I'm not trying to be contrary, I just wouldn't recommend it.
So how many feet is it, well, okay, so from the, I'm just gonna get up here a little bit. So what I'm asking is, how many feet from here to here, you got three, and then what is this space, then another one, how many feet?
Three feet.
Two, here's two, okay, so you got five, five and a half feet from here to here. To bring it out, that's what I want to know.
But having the bathrooms off of the meeting space, with, with no divider at all, I don't, I don't think that would be appealing at all, like, you just get out of the bathroom and then there's, you're opening up two, or you have fifty other people.
What I'm saying is, the, okay, so you were saying if you, if you put the bathrooms this way, and say you took out that sink area, could, that's where you're gaining your two feet?
Taking out the showers.
If you go back to the scheme, I'll, I'll explain a little bit better where I think the two feet come from.
Okay.
If you take out those two showers, if, if you take out those two showers, the distance required from here to here, from here to here, take about a foot out of that and a foot out of that, so this wall could come up about two feet, eliminating those two things.
Instead of this being eight feet, I think it's gonna be seven feet.
Yeah.
Which is our, our minimum, I think the toilet goes to this side, the sink comes to that side, and I think this line, this, this wall could actually move in ever so slightly, so we gain a little bit of space into this lobby space.
Yeah, essentially they get, without the shower, they get about two feet smaller as a whole. Maybe a little more, maybe two foot, something like that.
But even in that one, you have a, you've got a counter and a sink still in that one too, which is gonna take up another two feet.
Well.
And then I guess we'd have to figure out really the deus for the, for the meeting itself, maybe we don't have this big, whether we figure out another configuration, so, instead of that big arc.
And I think Plan B shows another version of that, a gentler radius.
Well, you had one version where it was at one end, and then you put the chairs the other way.
Correct, so we, we're showing two different ideas.
Yeah, so we're saying it's pretty much furniture, it could be laid out however you have it, but we're just showing it, this might be a good option, because it allows for a large blanks placed behind all the presenters, it could also allow, instead of it being out here where there's a, a door right behind, like an opening right behind, not, not ideal, I guess, location for that opening, maybe off to the sidewall, it, it brings all of the audience closer to the actual presenters as well. So it's a, it's kind of a, there's, but there's, there's, it's just furniture, it could just be laid out however.
No, no, there's one more thing I wanted to point out, the other thing it did was a second exit out of the meeting room or an entry of the primary parking, which is gonna be down here, this would be a way in, without going all the way around the building. It's certainly a good way out.
Because we did want that, because it was kind of dumb if we didn't have a spot there for that, all that parking on that backside.
That was one other reason.
In a security standpoint, this is really the best, because you got our backs to a wall instead of a door.
Right, yeah.
That's your seat, right?
And it gives you, like Brian was saying, it gives you a backdrop for presentation or a logo behind the head table.
Mayor thing.
And again, we just wanted to show you another option, as we were looking at alternatives in general, this was one, another one that came up.
Well, I would definitely get rid of the showers and at least try to gain whatever we can there.
Yeah, but we still need the sink though, right, because.
Well, that's still in the corner, but that's gonna be pushed in two feet.
You could move, you could move everything two feet and gain two feet in the, in this room.
Right. Chris, how was it for you for elections, I mean, you know, like I said, far be it from us to tell you guys what you need for work.
And you could take this, this completely out here and put it here.
I'm not a visual person, I need to know, like, does it compare, does it compare?
Right.
I can't look at that and say.
Right, but for elections though, you have people coming in the lobby. Right, coming in the entrance.
No, that part would work well, we'll have a precinct on each side.
Right, and then an exit.
I just tried to ask somebody, he wouldn't tell me.
And, and obviously those people that, you know, have difficulties walking.
He didn't want to measure.
You know, you're doing an effort.
That is actually better than here.
A little wider than this is right now. This is twenty-eight, so it's a little wider. And what's your dimension, first, thirty-six?
Thirty-six, nine, let's see, there's actually a wall to wall, so thirty-six.
So about the middle of that light, right above the weight room, where the gentleman's sitting, would be the back wall, that wall to that wall.
So it's smaller?
Smaller than this whole room, in, in length, a little bit wider, one foot wider.
But they lose a lot of space during.
Actually be two feet more.
We have to keep these doors that we can get through, so we actually.
Yeah.
Keep that, that section of where you're standing is left open for us for access to fire, the fire chief's room and that during elections, so we do lose some space.
And if we, I'm sorry, if we do move that wall out two feet, it gets a little bit bigger.
And there's that circular redundant flow that you won't have.
True.
Yes.
And like you said.
And you can put most of your stuff along this main wall.
We can use the walls, that's gonna be nice.
Yeah, but you can't do it here.
You could move that.
It doesn't work out well either too, with the people coming in and going out in that hallway, so this way, unless it's handicap person, they're just gonna exit out the opposite way, that's gonna help a lot.
Even if you use both doors, if you had everything along that wall, you're still gonna be in better shape than what you got here.
I have to have the precinct separated though.
Well, you still could, you got enough room in there to separate.
We could do a layout too, show as far as the, here's what the precinct size, let it show.
Measure all of our equipment and lay it out on the plan, perfect.
That's right.
Maybe that'll help you understand how it lays out.
Yeah.
Are you storing all your equipment in the secure storage room?
Um, I think we're gonna put the tabulators in the regular storage room, the city manager and I talked about, but all of the other equipment in the secure.
Okay, and then again, on the storage room, so you're just gonna use the giant space, and I still think we ought to look at trying to clean that mess up before we bring it all here.
I actually like what you're talking about, because.
You know, you know the cabinets I'm talking, they rotate?
Not a rotating, the one where, when I worked before, it wasn't rotating, but they were on a track that would cross the wall, from floor to ceiling, and you turn the wheel and it would eke them while they crossed.
These are just.
Oh, those are super.
These are just like in the doctor's office, but the, the whole thing rotates, and you've got files on each side, and they're fairly, very reasonable, but they're seven, seven shelves up, so you could put a lot of storage in it.
Can you put, like, when you went down there, you saw like everything is in those boxes?
Yes.
Most of those are full.
Yeah, they're five.
They're primarily for my department, would those fit in what yours?
Yeah, that's, they're made for files, all the files.
Files, not boxes.
Yeah.
That's what I'm trying to say, like.
But you could put books, you could put books, I guess we could look at the dimensions, there's all different kinds, so you could go out and look in them. There's a company that'll come in and show you what they have and figure out what you need, but, but all I looked at was some of those units, they were only like eleven hundred dollars, which is a good buy, and if you could clean up the majority of that, you wouldn't require a thousand square feet from what you got.
Your staff, your staff has to be comfortable with storage, it's a statutory requirement on our record retention. It's one of the primary functions of being a government is record retention, and it's pretty important, so you guys have to be. So you guys have to be comfortable with the ability to store the records that are required by law and for the time period.
Yeah. But I mean, we got boxes and we've got these odd.
Well, we probably have stuff now that under the record retention could go.
Exactly.
That's what we're working on, taking care of.
So, so we need to take the record retention state policy guidelines and apply it to what we have.
Correct.
But they have to be very comfortable that particularly the clerk, who's statutory primary responsibility is custodian of the records of the city.
Yeah. So we have police records down there, we've got the building records down there.
You know, I know storage is, yeah, you know, but storage is one of your primary functions.
We've all been in that basement.
So if I went down there.
Yeah, I went down.
We know.
Walked down there actually, the, when you saw those two rows of boxes, those were actually all my department.
Yeah.
Both sides. So the one side has been gone through and it's all current, meaning the requirements that you're discussing.
Right.
The other side is about half gone through, but probably only gonna get rid of about another twenty percent of what's existing there. So that, all of what's existing there is gonna stay minus us putting in the current year and then taking out whatever year, each year can, can leave.
Yeah, but these units, you should be able to put a lot of the stuff in there. I'm just trying to find you a better storage method than the clunky. You have a cube and you stick a box in there.
Sure.
I mean.
Elaine, have you looked at any storage units and stuff like that?
I haven't, but she showed me some pictures of what she's talking about. I, I think it's great. It would be nice to upgrade our storage. I don't necessarily know that it's something that we need to do, but if you guys are willing to spend the extra money to make it look good and get better organized, we support it.
To store the records properly, I mean.
And this could also be done secondary after the project.
Yeah.
Every department can buy one.
You don't need to hold up over this.
No, we need to keep going on this.
It's just such a huge space. So if, if you didn't use.
We would absolutely support it.
If you didn't use all that, what were you gonna do with some of this space?
So that space would be the backup space if we have growth in our office to move the conference room into that space.
Okay. Cause you never know what's gonna happen in ten or twenty years, right?
Yeah, we, we haven't really addressed recreation at this point. That's something, working on the next budget, that, so yeah, we would talk about.
You'd turn this back into an office, this conference room?
Yes.
Yeah.
And then you'd move the conference room over there if you had the space?
Yeah.
That's the planned growth.
Okay.
You gotta leave some space for it.
Yes.
So I heard the word or some word that reminded me of schedule. So I wanted to present a little bit of an update. So here we are today on the twentieth. I know you're gonna be talking about the survey, which is an element we need to progress with the site work and soil boring, which we'll need as well. So with that, we figured we'd take two tracks. One, building design, completion of documents, start of construction, and then site work. So the site work wouldn't necessarily hold us up from moving things along, which will obviously save you money. So that's, here we are today. If we get that going, that's about a three-week timetable to get that and engineering underway. We'll be working on finalizing the building and with some direction based on the options we talked about tonight. Looking at now putting the GMP or Guaranteed Maximum Price on the twenty-sixth of March. Is there a way that I ask a question, we get confirmation on what we talked about? Or is that something we follow up with after tonight's meeting? Meeting, water main stays, floor sink stays, bathroom walls optimized.
I would like to get you a decision made today.
Okay, so of those five things, is it all or apart? And I think, I heard a lot of yeses, but.
I think speaking for us in the office, the design plan with the water meter and the water heater staying in their place works for us. And I think also for us, getting rid of the showers and moving that wall to make the workplace larger works for us as well.
And that reduces the cost and that would be the same as Plan B, correct?
Yeah, Plan B plus the showers, which is a little more saving.
Plan B with a little modification.
Yeah.
So from sixty-five to a little more.
Yes, a little more. Probably a couple thousand per shower, let's say.
Right, seventy.
I do have one question about the front counter in the main lobby. The front counter in the main lobby will obviously be standing there conducting work. Is there any way to move that up a little bit to accommodate space for someone standing there, conducting work with someone at the counter and a person walking?
So you got a split counter, so you got a counter on each side?
No, not, not a split counter, just moving it a little further like north, so.
Into the lobbies.
Yes.
Yes, for sure.
That, that would be perfect because that way we can easily have people crossing back and forth.
Someone working and two other people walking different ways behind them.
Yes.
It wouldn't stick out either into your, your area.
Yeah.
Yeah, based on the door swing, that's what we use as our gauge. It looks, we could probably go another two feet.
Yeah, I think we can go probably about, so it would be forty-two inches from.
About two feet.
It'll just look better.
Perfect.
And that could save some money too.
I think that'll give a little.
Different materials.
I think it'll give a little more visibility from the other offices to the counter as well.
So we're almost at forty?
We're over forty now.
See, bada boom bada bang.
So do you, do you have the answers?
Yeah, all of what we talked about on B, plus the showers, and we're moving the counter forward.
And I'm actually gonna ask for a motion on this to accept Plan B with the cost savings removal of the, um, the showers as a design.
So we, so we can head to the guaranteed maximum price?
I, I will make a motion, we accept Plan B with the exception of removing showers in the meeting area and relocating the counter.
Was that it?
Well, we're talking about removing shower, well, this, that plan already had the showers removed.
Yeah.
Yeah, remove the showers to make the, the room bigger.
No, it still had them in it, this one.
B did.
Plan B does show.
This is B.
This is B, correct?
Yeah, you wanna go to the other half of B?
Okay.
So for this, Plan B.
The showers are.
This wall was two feet.
Yes, yes, yes.
And I, that's what I took, what you were saying.
And the, and the main counter gets moved.
Yeah, he said that.
Right, all the, all the above.
So we've got a motion. Any further questions on this?
Is there a second?
Let's get a second.
Yes, we got a second.
Got a second?
See, I'm right on the ball tonight.
So at this point, we're just talking the plan, we're talking nothing else?
Right.
We're not getting into the costs and we're not doing anything else?
No, that's gonna come back to us. We're talking about the design.
This is, this is.
This is just this.
You're at the stage of finalizing for them what, what this is, and now you're gonna get back from them the guaranteed price.
Now, let me ask you this. When you come back with the guaranteed price, I know you gave us this the last time with the basic cost. I mean, you're just giving us the overall cost. Do you have anything that shows the breakdown of how you came to this? Can we have?
Well, you're gonna get something, not that breakdown, the, the final breakdown, which will be a lengthy document indicating trades.
All right. Because I have a lot of questions on that also.
It will generate a lot of questions.
Yes.
And that gets into some of the materials, correct?
Yes, yeah.
So that would be an opportunity for us when we're talking about that to further cut those costs, saving some of the materials.
Yes, yeah.
Reducing the quality, yep.
That might take another meeting. You identify your areas of question. We come back another time with some response to that in terms of savings.
Yep.
Or even other options.
Perfect.
That, that process goes right up until things start happening. Cause you're gonna wanna get more visuals, like show me a sample and then show me a sample of something else. That's just the way it usually goes. It's a couple more kind of interactions on our part with you.
You, you, you'll always be able to whittle down, but you're always gonna have a guaranteed maximum.
Yeah.
It takes another vote to go over the guaranteed maximum, but you can, as you're heading towards things and you, you wanna do a lesser quality cabinet and save ten dollars, then you're still within your guaranteed maximum. You're just down a little. And going down a little is okay, under the contract.
And we'll wanna, we wanna finalize that process when we, once we go to trade bidding.
Right.
We don't wanna get someone on board, committed to a contract, and then go back to them and try to negotiate for ten dollars because you only get five. We wanna make sure that's done before we do that stuff.
And how soon are we gonna need the list from the city of all the contractors and that kinda thing?
Well, that's on my list too. I, I would like that as soon as possible because we're kinda beating the drum to generate interest of those people that wanna be, participate. There, there isn't a date too late until we get bids, but the sooner you could get them to me, the sooner the building process can start in terms of talking with them. So just a couple, a couple more dates I wanted to go through, cause what we presented last time obviously has shifted primarily because of the site work that we needed to get done. But March twenty-sixth, we'll come back or submit the GMP. And then we're expecting on April second, the renovation will start in the building. The site itself will lag because we're anticipating we won't go to the site plan commission until the nineteenth of April, based on the dates in terms of submittal and review time that it takes. So we're obviously gonna start construction before that in general for the building. And then looking at substantial completion by July fourteenth, which previously was June twenty-sixth. So there's about a three-week kinda pushback on that.
All right, right now we do have a motion and a second on the table. Any further questions on design for, so they can get their final price to us, maximum price?
Yeah, so I'll save all my questions for when we get that.
Okay.
And I have a lot of.
All right. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Oh, did you have?
Yeah, I wanted to ask one about the topographical, is that for the sewer, the storm sewer?
That would be shown, all existing characteristics of the site will be on that survey, boundary, elevation changes, anything that's there easements or anything that happens on the site characteristic wise.
Okay.
That's the next topic anyway.
Yeah, we're on a vote.
We're on a vote.
We were, we are.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Okay. Did you have, you had anything else on the design part of it?
Nope. I guess I might after I hear about the survey, but I just don't know.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your time.
Yeah.
Thank you, David. We'll move to the survey right now if you wanna stay.
Yeah. All right, next we're moving on to the topographical survey bids for two sixty South.
So we did get three quotes for the topo survey, one being from project controls engineer, another from Wade Trim, and also one from BMJ. The quote that we received from Wade Trim is not, or they have, they have a note in there that says it should not be considered a certified survey. I'm not sure if that's sufficient for your needs. And then the quote that we received from project control engineers, that's the firm that they plan on partnering with for the engineering for this building.
So you got two basically at thirty-five and one at twenty-four.
Yep.
Right, and the one at twenty-four is the one from Wade Trim that has that disclaimer.
Does it have to be?
It should be.
Should be.
It should be, from my perspective, if you don't mind me answering, but it would be from your building department would be the, should be.
Where did, Lisa, where did your cheap one come from?
I didn't. I just got an, I went online to just study topographical maps and they said for our area, the average cost was only five hundred to twelve hundred.
Oh, so you didn't actually get it?
No, but there's like twenty engineering firms that you can contact in this county that could give you one.
All right, I just was curious, cause that was a big difference.
So can we get a motion? Cause we really do need to pick one.
Preferred would be project control engineers because they did do the boundary survey and they will be the partner engineering firm.
That is the same price.
Wave, and then you have to.
So we're gonna have to waive competitive bids?
Yeah, these are quotes.
Funding over two thousand. We got bids but not sealed.
Do a, do a motion to waive competitive bids and then move forward.
You heard the man. Can we get a motion to waive competitive bids?
I make a motion to waive competitive bids. Do I add that on now or just that motion?
Just that.
Just that motion, stand alone motion.
I make a motion to waive competitive bids.
Support.
And, any.
Get a little antsy after.
I know that, I see that. Just put the gun on me.
Roll call.
I gotta have questions first. Any questions on waiving competitive bids? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now we're moving on to actually pick a contractor for this, or a survey company for this. And there are, well, the one we kinda get a disregard due to the fact it's not certified. So we either need to do project control engineers or DJM, but you work, you are already working with project control engineers?
Yes, we are.
The only difference is thirty dollars.
I'll make a motion, we proceed with wording to project control engineers for the topographic survey for three thousand five hundred and thirty dollars.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on this? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yes.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, now we're moving on to damage at two sixty South.
So I believe I mentioned at a previous meeting that I spoke with Brian, the tenant that we had in there, and he agreed to do whatever it takes to make things right and put doors, bathrooms back, whatever it took. Beyond that, I'm not sure what it is that the board would be looking for. From the approval of the plan that we have tonight, virtually everything is going to be demoed. Other than that, I'm not sure what it is that the commission's looking for.
I think maybe the question might be, you, you, you went to the structure and saw that some things had happened. Some of it, I, I looked at it and it, it, it might have been helpful in, you know, the ceiling, you were gonna, like, some of the ceiling work got done for you.
For sure.
Okay, so was there anything that changed the price or?
Nothing that would be impacted more.
Okay, all right, that's, I, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I, I think that was relevant.
It is.
To this discussion. Because I, the way I looked at it is, you know, some of the things they were gonna have to do, we were gonna have to do, we kinda got done free.
All right.
Well, but it technically shouldn't have been.
It should not, it's, and I'm not, I don't mean to minimize that. And, and, and if you want a demand letter to go to this tenant, because the tenant has said that tenant will make whole whatever we want, I'll, I'll prepare that. It's just I don't know if that process is gonna save us any money. Because I don't think, in retrospect, it, it doesn't seem like it mattered.
Yeah.
But you do have legal rights to make that demand.
Cause we'll have to pay for you to write a letter.
I'll write it on my way home, if we leave soon.
I guess, okay, maybe we can't do anything about the damage, but I guess my question is, when we do demolish, whatever, dismantle, whatever we have in there, and there are salvageable items, how are you gonna deal with that? Or are you just gonna can it all? I mean, you can.
We're, we're gonna try and repurpose what we can.
Okay.
And potentially have a yard sale. So there are some items in there that we won't be using again. The doors that are in there are not solid doors, they're hollow core and that's something that.
More residential core.
Right, right.
They're not commercial.
So that's something that we could potentially sell. We've, we've talked in the past about some of the things that we have in our office, having a, in essence, yard sale. So, getting off topic.
You have to bid it out is what our process is. So it's not necessarily just a sale.
You'll have to come back to us for approval to give that.
I, I don't know how we're gonna bid out chairs and doors.
What they did last time when they cleaned out three hundred Broadway and we ran into the same issue that people were taking whatever they wanted out of there before we got to it. They, what they did was they created a big list of items and they put it out there and asked people to just say, how much would you give us for whatever? Now, can you waive the bidding process for that also?
Or you, there, I think there are some state thing where you can put materials in there into these programs and they do all that for you, if you wanna get rid of things. there, into these programs, and they do all that for you, if you wanna get rid of things, but I can get you some information on that. Or we can waive it.
Or we can auction it.
And auction it and keep it local.
But you know, what are we, what are we talking, cuz I, I was in, I was in the building yesterday, and I, and I'm, I've done many construction projects.
Not a lot going on here.
Many, and I looked around, and I'm, there's some flooring, it's used, um, there is the doors, the hollow core, 36-inch, six-panel doors, they're all residential.
I got you.
Um, a couple of turrets, a couple of sinks, some faucets, and then, and so if you add all that up, I mean, if, if you're gonna be throwing that into a garage sale, cuz we talked about that when you and I met, and, but then you have the labor of taking all that off, right, you gotta pay somebody to take those doors off, and the casings, and the moldings, and, and then we're gonna put them somewhere, and, and, and so I'm thinking, when I went through it, in my head, I was going, you possibly could get $1,500 for everything, literally. And then you're paying $800 for somebody, if it's an all-day job, for somebody to come in, you know, and you got somebody to do it.
You're already paying them to demo it, so there's no cost there, they gotta take it out anyway, and half of it's.
But then you're in a construction zone, then now we have to move it into another area. We were just talking about literally throwing all that stuff into the front of that, like the, where the old gym was, and then including some of the stuff that they wanted to get rid of, and like, I, I would give four hours gladly to help sell stuff, but is it, is it worth it, you know, it's like a couple hundred bucks?
It's not a lot of money.
It's not a lot of money. It truly is not a lot of money.
But there are, there are people here in town that would probably gladly give you a few bucks for it, I don't know, it's up to you, but.
But you'll have to come back to us to make that decision.
We can, let's look into that a little bit.
Could we do some type of blanket where you allow us to have either a silent auction or get an itemized list, bring the itemized list to you that this is our price?
Let people bid on it.
And prove it from that point.
Or we could donate it, you know, they have, what is the name of that?
Habitat.
Habitat, thank you. Cuz I've had Habitat come in and take a lot of the stuff that I've demoed on projects, and, and, I mean, it goes to a good cause, I mean, it really goes to a good cause.
So that's another option, too.
It's a good option.
It's something that we're.
You'll come back.
We're getting limited on time, and if we wanna do something like that, we need to really start thinking about doing it as soon as possible.
That's a great idea.
Especially if they wanna get in there and demo, go first.
The last thing we gotta deal with, too, is when is he gonna get the rest of his stuff out?
I think they just come and get it.
That was something I was speaking to Cheryl about, and I'll probably be sending him a letter, letting him know he's got two more weeks to get the stuff out.
Yeah, it's, it's time.
Yeah.
Otherwise, I want.
I needed to know how this meeting would turn out, and if we were potentially going to be doing any type of litigation coming out of this before I send it him a letter.
It's not worth it.
We're not gonna get anywhere with it.
No. But maybe we make the, can the decision be made now about?
Why don't you make a decision?
Habitat.
Why don't you make a decision?
Donate it to Habitat.
To donate to, uh.
Seriously.
To the Habitat.
So we could have them come in and take everything?
They won't, they won't, I mean, they won't take it out, I'm telling you, they won't take it out.
It has to be pulled out, yeah.
So we have to remove it, so we'll work.
And they'll come pick it up.
Yep.
So we'll work with partners in architecture and working on the demo, set things aside that we won't be able to reuse.
And we'll donate them.
Yeah, we're gonna probably use all them toilets.
The toilets, the sinks, the fixtures, right.
Let's get a motion that we, any excess product?
Yeah.
We're gonna donate.
Unless we can use it.
Unless we can use it.
And I'll, and I'll work with partners on architecture on what we need.
Are you saying to Habitat for Humanity, like, that's where it's specifically?
Or whatever.
Charity.
Any nonprofit that.
Right.
Like a veteran's organization.
Habitat's one of the few, though, that.
They come and pick it up.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I make a motion to, um, I just forgot what my motion said. To take all of the salvageable material from our new address and donate it to a charitable organization such as Habitat for Humanity.
Support.
Motion support. Any questions on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post.
Hearing, uh, all right. And I just don't think there's anything further we can even deal with, with the damage that was done, I mean.
And what's the word?
You have all, you have all kinds of legal rights, it's just, I, I just don't know if you've really been harmed enough to warrant.
And I don't, and if it went to litigation, I think we'd lose.
I don't think so.
You would win, and you, and you would win nothing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you are gonna draft something.
Under real estate law, once it's attached to the building.
To tell him he's got two weeks.
But you're not gonna gain anything, that's right.
So.
What I'm saying by the.
Anybody else has anything else, I was gonna just move on to the next topic. Okay. Moving on to Resolution 002-2020, Publicly Funded Health Insurance Contribution Act, and motion to approve.
So moved.
Support.
Okay.
This is a resolution that we are required to pass regarding our revenue sharing from the state. If we do not pass this resolution, and we have limits on the health insurance, then we will not get our revenue sharing. One of the stipulations that we have about the insurance is that we have contracts with our unions that ties our hands to having the cap.
Any other questions on it?
Yeah. We, we've been getting letters as, on the health plan, as the private individual, that there's a rebate that comes back to the city, have you heard about that?
I think there was a rebate one point in time, and that was for pension healthcare insurance. This is for the actives.
Okay, cuz I got two letters on that, two different years in a row.
Any other questions on it? Hearing none, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Verkaman.
Yes.
Mayor Vanabash.
Yes.
Commissioner Bryson.
Yes.
Commissioner Hendrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Callahan.
Yes.
Commissioner Clausen.
Yes.
Commissioner Merchant.
Yeah.
Motion carries.
All right, moving on to city manager's report.
I attended the Homeland Security Emergency Management Meeting and the Fire Authority Meeting. I did a webinar regarding pavement warranties, which was pretty interesting. The department's budgets have been submitted, I've got those imported into BSNA, I'll be working with the treasurer on that next week, and then the departments the following week, and should have the budgets to you the week after that. Landscape bids were opened on Tuesday, and they should be on the next agenda for you, and IT bids are due on Monday.
That's it? Any questions for the city manager?
I just wondered if we got a schedule for the new building inspector?
Tuesday afternoon, Tuesday afternoons, Thursday mornings?
Yes.
What time?
No particular time. So it'd be before noon, and then afternoon.
Tuesdays and?
Tuesdays afternoon.
Yeah.
After 12 o'clock noon.
And what was the other day?
And then Thursdays up until noon.
Okay.
Obviously, being out on inspections, that may fluctuate just a little bit, but generally, those will be the times he'll be in the office.
Yes, Liz.
I got a few. I had a request, I know it's a bad time of year, but I think we're gonna get a little warm-up. The 15-minute parking space, will need paint whenever it gets above a good temperature.
Is that the one in front of bakery?
Yes. It's, um, it's being utilized very well, but the problem is, is when it snows, that sign that's way up with the goofy little arrow there, nobody sees it, so when it's buried.
It doesn't get utilized properly?
Correct, and so, but, everybody's been utilizing it in that block, it's been working out very well otherwise.
Great.
So if we could just do something with that. I know we got our new police vehicle in it, are we gonna get that marked anytime soon? It has no markings on it. We agree we're gonna replace the K-9 unit with that vehicle?
I think that was gonna be next budget year.
No, his, his vehicle was gonna be next budget year. He needed something to replace the K-9, so we said we'll use that one to replace the K-9, and then we'd work in the budget to replace his vehicle.
I'll get with him and find out scheduling.
Even though he's gonna use it in the meantime.
Yeah, I'll, I'll get with him and find out scheduling, but I, I think that wasn't gonna be done until we get in the next budget.
Okay.
Cuz he'll, he'll be using the car, so then shifting and getting another car to replace, that's when everything will be done.
All right. And we still have the three vehicles? Now, we have the K-9 unit, we have his old vehicle, and we have the other SUV that's still sitting at the DBW, are we gonna get rid of them?
That would be the plan, and that's kind of what we talked about, is the, getting rid of some of this equipment and stuff that we have. So now that we're donating stuff to Habitat from the building, I think we need to further vet that plan and get rid of some stuff on other means.
And he is, he's gonna submit them for.
Put it out for silent.
I was talking about the insurance, so I said, we need to do.
Okay. What about the Seawat in East St. Clair, any word on, any update?
He needs to be able to get to it, the water level's too high, we're on the list.
Um, I checked the December planning meeting, there was nothing in there regarding property removal, and I also checked the minutes, there was nothing.
Property removal.
For the, for the master plan.
Do you listing things on the master plan?
Correct.
They, they've been working on the master plan, it, I think it was the meeting before that. The last master plan, they just talked about the nautical mile stuff. It's all part of a package that will be.
Prior one, the last meeting, I was told it was the December meeting, so that's what I'm looking at.
They talked about it, and it will be part of the revised master plan.
There's nothing in the minutes, except for the nautical mile thing, so I'm looking, I, I just wanna make sure that they know that's part of the thing.
Yes, it, it was discussed at the meeting, and when, when they get the revised master plan for their final review before they plan, pass it on to city commission, it will be taken care of.
Okay. Last thing is, I noticed in a lot of our bills that we're finally buying all the stuff for the pocket part.
Right.
So I guess I wanna know if we've got any information yet on what kind of trades people we need, so we can start rounding people up, cuz spring's coming, and if we have a timeline for that project.
They're working on that.
Okay. Cuz I, I know people that we can probably get, but I need to round them up and give them some type of.
Get in their schedule?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
We all do.
Yeah.
We all, lots of people that can help, and I'm, and I'm sure we'd be happy to do it, it'd be fun.
We appreciate it, thank you.
Any other questions for the city manager? Moving on to commissioner privilege, and, uh, what did we call it?
Community reports.
Community, yeah. Liaisons, that's the word I was looking for.